Starting reporting.
Okay. I'm just thinking as I was driving, oh, what a great place to be living. East Tennessee is just gorgeous. And one of the things that I think really makes Barrow really special is the library. And when you come over here and see what's happening, it just really makes me feel good. That would make so much sense. And thank you again to the staff and Casey and Arjuna for making it a jewel here. Okay. I'm gonna call those the meeting to order. If we have any guests, I'd like you to introduce yourselves. And I'm going to change our pattern a little bit. Instead of having guests have an opportunity to speak, I'm gonna ask them to hold off until the meeting is, till the end of the meeting, and then if they have any questions, they can raise the questions at the end of the meeting. And again, you'll have two minutes or longer if you want it. We'll see what happens after the meeting is over. So Andrew, I know who you are. Andrew Jones from the New Sun. Daily Times, I'm sorry.
You saw that through the mask.
I apologize. Anyone else as a guest? Okay. Thank you. Again, as I said, we're gonna hold off to the end if there's any questions. I'm going to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last meeting, since this is a called meeting for a special reason. And we will have the reading of the minutes and approval for our next meeting. The first point of this meeting is the notice of Casey of her resignation. It was a surprise, I think, to everyone to get that mail on Sunday night. She has done an incredible job. And I would like to make a motion to accept. And I'd like a second to accept her resignation letter. Can I have a motion to do that? Is there a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. The second motion I'd like to put into effect would be a commendation. And I would like someone to come up with that. I'd like a volunteer from the board to create a commendations letter to go to the Daily Times and to be a public record of all of the accomplishments and things, the positive things that Casey has done in their past six years. The library has grown immensely. She's just done an incredible job in growing the library and bringing it as a fourth floor. And I would like to see that publicized. So do I have a volunteer for the board who would work on that commendation? If I don't hear somebody, I would nominate somebody. Thank you. All right. Next. This is gonna keep going like this, so be prepared to volunteer. Because if not, you're gonna be volunteering. Andrew, would you mind leaving for a little while? Next step, since we've accepted Casey's resignation, will be to create a interim director. And in the position of interim director, I would like to have a motion to have Arjuna ruined as the new interim director. Do I have that motion? And a second. Thank you all. All in favor of doing that?
I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
Some discussion. I fully support that. If we're gonna give her the responsibility, I want her to have the authority. And so effective immediately, she needs to be the person that's making all the decisions, signing things, you know, in terms of procurements and invoices and payroll and all of that. I just, it goes along with. And so that means Casey needs to be removed from those internal control documents and those internal controls for those systems. And it just, I just want Arjuna from the get-go. If we vote to do that, that she's immediately authorized to act out of that role without the law. That's just my opinion.
The question really is, Casey has entered her resignation.
Yes. It was effective as of the 14th, right?
Is she still the director to that timeframe or are you saying that to this particular day forward, that her, she is in the new recognition?
I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing is if we're gonna do this, let's make it immediate and get on with it.
To have her take over immediately?
Yeah. And that's no disrespect for Casey, that's respect for Arjuna.
I understand that. So the question becomes, what role does Casey play for the next?
Advisor. Advice of employee, you know, assisting with the transition and that type of thing, which is incredibly important over these next few weeks.
I think it's awesome to have those couple of weeks, you know? I'm very thankful for Casey to have given us that time that we can, just like sponges, take all that knowledge.
It would be one week.
I think it's one week.
She said she was leaving as of the 14th.
Yeah, this week was already. I'm sorry, I don't have a problem with the recommendation. I just wanna make sure that there is a fit in terms of the fault of Casey's responsibility moving into what? Arjuna, et cetera. Do we need to discuss this with Casey or how do we make this happen?
I mean, I'm gonna suggest that our chair sit down with Arjuna and Casey immediately.
It would be tomorrow, based on, I'm going out of town Saturday, so it will be tomorrow. And then she's going after the 14th, so that's it.
Something I do wanna bring up, just to make sure. As far as her being an interim director, all the responsibilities would fall on her. And I'm assuming the benefits of being a director would also fall on her.
Benefits?
Yeah.
She needs to be appropriately compensated.
I have printed out, if you all want copies, actually, one of the staffs, since you found this for me, is the description of the Blount County Library Director and the description of the Deputy Director. They're basically the same thing, except the deputy takes place of the director if the director's gone. So there's virtually no difference. My next step, after we talk about this, would be talking about compensation.
Perfect.
And so, let's go through this first, so that we'll get there. Okay, so. You have, didn't have the right that, that would like a chance that you had a change there?
It is accepting Arjuna as interim director and having her immediately take over.
Does everybody understand that? Can I have a motion to make that come?
The motions are made, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the question started many.
Okay.
So we need to vote.
So it has to be. Okay. To vote on the amendment first. Is there a?
Well, then I move on to my amendment.
Okay. Is there a second on the amendment? All those in favor of those amending the motion? Is if anyone opposed, the motion carries to the amendment? So now we have to add that amendment to the motion? Does everybody remember how the motion was read? All right. Is there a negative vote on the motion? I assume then all are positive, and so the motion carries.
There's lots of ways to get to the same place.
Okay. The next step is I've been talking with the Personnel Department of the county to see, to try to understand how the structure of payroll is set for the library and for the different positions. There is a step. It's hard to explain, I really don't quite understand it. But there is a definite category spread in payroll dollars between the grades. And Arjuna is in a grade just below Casey. When the green tree payroll bound increases were such that virtually everyone got a decent increase except Casey. And so her rate and Arjuna's rate are very close, which normally would not be the case. And I would, in this position, I was going to ask for a substantial increase. But after I looked at the rate, what I would like to do is be able to go to the county and sit down with Personnel Department there and talk about what is allowed and where she would be in the county structure. I'm thinking that probably if we be in the neighborhood of that percentage increase, and what I would like it to be would be in the neighborhood, what I'd like it to be would be a package that would not be a increase in her rate, but it would be a package that is, or a rate that is in addition to, so that she would get paid on a bi-weekly basis.
Stop. Stop.
A stop. Or? They call it something else. I can't, I thought it was, I can't remember. But it would be, it would be something that she would be paid on a bi-weekly basis. And what I would like it to do would be to carry two weeks through a new director's position. So that it would keep going and if a new director, if anyone is on, she would still be given that two weeks after the director's. But I can't tell you what that would be until I talk about, see what the rules are, because I don't.
I'm coming to turn this over to anybody.
Maybe, Dawn, I don't know, maybe you know what the rules are.
Well, I think that, I think that you'll have to go to the county commission to get that money.
Well, the money's there.
And I still think you have to come to the county commission to get that money.
To ask for it?
Yeah, ask the school board about that. Because they have to come, every time they want to spend it down, they have to come to the county. Even if it's there, they still have to come ask for it. So I think that's probably what you're gonna have to do. Somebody at the courthouse can direct you a whole lot better than I can.
All right.
I think, and you need to go with the votes. And then they will confirm that the votes are suggested and then you got to deal with that.
I don't think there is anything that would affect our budget or going forward, going forward, since we've lost some employees. So that's not gonna affect anything. So we're not gonna be asking for any more money.
And I think the county is aware of it.
I would hope so.
Re-recommend that she be in the neighborhood.
So what I would like, it's a supplemental salary, is what it's called. And so what I would like to do is be able to, I'd like a motion for me to be able to go to the county, discuss it, give it to the commission and request an increase as a supplemental salary increase that would last two weeks after the new director is hired. And if the new director happens to be Arjuna, she should return her position. Do I have a motion to that?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Does Andrew meet criteria for director currently?
I don't know that. I read it, it says she has to have five to seven years of directorship. But there's no, there's no requirements for the interim position.
I understand that.
I couldn't find anything that talks about interims. But.
I'm looking at, yeah, next step. In terms of she needs that money.
I think the commissioner or the county has to take a long look at this because the description also says that she has to be able to crawl, crouch, lift 20 pounds and do some other things that is just incredible out here. She also has to be able to run virtually every machine, including every equipment. So I think some of these things are probably not gonna follow it.
Educational.
Educate, educational. She has to have seven years of public library experience, with at least seven years of supervisory management experience, five years of experience as the library director, et cetera.
Yeah, I think she, I think the only question I would have is whether she's set five years as director. I know she was a director before she changed. And that's easy, this is another tip.
And I think the bigger picture right now is that we're not looking for the director at this meeting. So they had something, I'd focus on the interim. And then we don't need to consider her outside of everybody else. Exactly. So we gotta have that process and revisit, you know, we'll have an opportunity to go.
Absolutely.
And if I'm saying correctly, we're the one that approved the job description. Send it over there, so we may need to have a discussion about the specific job description.
We wrote this?
I'm pretty sure we did. It was written by the board at the time.
Oh, so we were really a library. I got you. Okay.
Yeah. Because you have to be able to publish what your criteria and that kind of thing is. And I'm with you. If we need to revisit it, we can do that at our next meeting. I wouldn't do it here.
We could, we can change some of the requirements.
If we chose to.
Yeah, if we need to.
You know, I'm not saying that we will, but I'm just saying if that's something we, you know, want to revisit, just at least check it, make sure it still stands.
Probably should.
You know, most job descriptions should be reviewed every time you have some turnover or something like that. That's pretty typical.
Well, I did bounce off of Lou Shrek, our state representative, with the idea of. And I also bounced it off of Jockton Johnson here, and county mayor. And they had no problem. So I hope we would have no problems to go to the commission.
I think that's the whole point of a deputy. And she has done that job when, you know, Casey was on vacation and whatnot. So I think that's something that it definitely suits me to know that we have somebody qualified that knows what we have and we continue the good work that Casey has put forward as well.
So for the real one, do you have a succession plan? Is there a succession plan?
I'm not aware of any succession. You're talking about a formal one, right? I'm not aware that we have a formal succession plan here.
The question is, is Casey looking at Arjuna to be faced with what she got? With generally, in terms of organization, be it how the faculty?
On Monday morning, when I talked to Casey, I asked her, were recommendations to be to replace her as the interim? And she agreed. And what I talked, and of course, then I talked to Arjuna also. And told her that this would be an interim position and only an interim position until she, if she wanted to interview for the position. But that would go before the group that would be passed to interview for.
And do you have to publicly post the position?
Yes. And we'll get into that. Okay, so I'm not sure where we are. Yeah. I would like to have the motion.
I move that we authorize you to independently, on behalf of this board, with the appropriate authorities in negotiating an appropriate compensation package for the new interim director.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you. And I will do that. Okay, you can bring Arjuna back. Thanks, Sophia. One of the things that I would like every member to do is now in the interim, to come in and please sit down and talk to Arjuna, talk to her about your ideas, your thoughts, and where we're going to be going forward. Arjuna reports directly.
Thank you.
She will be reporting directly to the board. And she is the only one out of the library that reports directly to the board. So please get to know her. If you have ideas or thoughts, put those across to her, good or bad, and just really get to know her. And I would encourage you to wander around, like, to get to know all of us. All the staff and the different departments, because they're incredible. Okay, next, next on the agenda is this, this is the sustainability report. What I would like to do is have a motion and some discussion and put the sustainability report on hold. The sustainability report was created with the idea that we would be losing $200,000 of this next budget year. And we didn't see any way that we were gonna come out of that. And it was something that probably needed to be looked at, so we know, harder, but we passed it. And so I feel we can put it on hold if we want to, or we can do it anyway. And after interviewing 27 employees in this, here, Stephanie interviewed, what, seven, eight, nine, 10 employees also. The employees in the library would like to see at least a hold on this temporarily or permanently, until we can think of a look at. Because the change in our budget is changing dramatically. We are, we are now, and we'll see a budget report next month, our next, next meeting in two weeks, that will really, and I've asked Arjuna to really spell out where we are now. We wanna know how we're gonna look now, how we're gonna look at the end of June, and how we think we're gonna look for next year. I don't think we're gonna be short of $200,000, but I think we probably will be. We're on a positive roll with the stack bar, it's doing very well. We are renting these rooms more than we have in the past. And it should do nothing but increase. Our utility bills are dropping. And I think we will have more money than we possibly. And with that kind of concept, I want us to think, as a board, to take a long look at where we're going in the future with directions for Arjuna, budget-wise and payroll-wise and people-wise. So.
No, I'm thinking that there's merit in giving a new director when that person provides an opportunity to look at this and sort of characterize their own future here at the library. So that's the only reason, frankly, that I can support putting it on hold. I am not prepared to support eliminating it. We asked Casey to come up with a very difficult, challenging plan to respond to some very hard decisions that we were gonna have to make given our projected $200,000 shortfall. And she did that. And it was hard. It was hard on the staff. It's hard, our decisions haven't been made. So I'm not prepared to disrespect that work and just eliminate. But I do agree that, you know, for me, I could support putting it on hold so that a new person has an opportunity to look at it and perhaps introduce their own ideas about how some of these challenges can be managed. That's my perspective.
We don't want them to reinvent the wheel, I think if they can take that, again, make it for all.
Other thing I would like to put up on, besides the sustainability report, is the position filling of Ari Baker's position, which in our, in our interviews with him, felt that that position did not have to be filled. And so I think that should be put up on right now. And whoever the new director might be, then take it, then go. I think the employees in the library can handle, because it should that care. Take up the slack if there is.
Well, that would help to save some money, too.
So Casey spoke to the board. That was a key component. That was, are you saying that people under why, will that team, the responsibility of being all over that?
If we put the sustainability on hold, the report on hold, then I would think that we would go back to the management that we had before, where we had department managers or whatever you call that, whatever they were called on today.
Department managers.
Department managers, until we see where we are and what's going forward. So we would go back to having area supervisors, basically. There is no way that Arjuna will be the only one left. She cannot handle that to the library, it's just not possible.
Yeah. Does that also include not eliminating the part-time positions? Right now, just kind of holding what we got.
We put this on hold and everything is put out there. And yes, that would be part of it.
And then I'm gonna have to ask, where's the money coming from? But you're gonna, you're gonna clarify money for us at our next meeting, right?
If we can't afford it, no.
Yeah.
But I think right now, we need to take a long look at that.
And in the interim, you don't have Casey's salary when she's gone, so that helps.
It buys us some time.
Yeah.
What about those people that are part-time, who have already turned in their notices, even though that they were supposed to?
I've already, I talked to the Personnel Department at the county about this. And any of them can come back, any of their positions, as long as they were not fired or left in good standing. And I have no idea, but I'm assuming that if they were leaving a employment need, also, and come back at the same rate and the same thing, same position that they were in.
Well, you know, we just got finished talking about the importance of giving you the authority along with the responsibility, and the staffing is yours.
But for that, that's my question. Have you guys, you and I, have the expression about how we will now manage this change under the situation that we are? So then the efforts of the, the. It's on you to tell each other how we need to go forward to go into the next stage.
So I would just like to take a moment to let everyone know that on, actually, heck, we, so I believe it was on Tuesday morning, we met with, I met with the staff. I keep saying we, but there's me. I met with the staff and I let them know that we would be meeting tonight. And in this meeting, we'd be discussing the sustainability plan and that it could go either way. But that I would be starting, it's gonna sound interesting, but daily little touchpoint meetings at 8:45 every morning, just to check in, see how everyone's doing, letting them know who's out or in, you know? And then I met with, later I met with the, we were called the admin planning team. So the admin planning team can consist of manager of the patron services department, the manager of youth services, collections manager, and the adult services manager. Anna will also be pulled in on that. And we had, I believe, a very frank conversation about what was needed. And I told them that I could not do this alone, that I see this as a team and I would need their support and input. And I believe it was safe to say I left that meeting feeling like they were on board and excited. I told them that my motivations in this interim was to keep the ship steady, bring in joy, that, you know, the public sees this as wonderful. And now we want to feel that way. And we're going to work towards that. And we're, we're going to look, we're going to do things slower. We're still going to do things, but we're going to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row, got our processes in place, and then we'll roll it out. So I feel with their support that this is very due.
What is our process now with the new executive order and the new, new coming in? What is our process to getting things back up, going, programming?
So we're still looking into that. I believe Liz Shrek will probably be able to give us an update if there is anything.
There is no update.
Yeah. Right now, there's, there's.
Well, the update is the executive order, is that it's no longer.
It's only, it only deals with government.
Yeah. So right now, the state has.
Executive order you're referring to?
Was the one that where he said we didn't have to have Zoom meetings anymore.
That's right.
I think I'm more sort of focusing on, when are we going to get, when you say bring joy, get the community back in here more, you know, back to more.
So here's the other thing. Right now, we are operating at fifty-six hours. I would be amazed if, you know, vaccinations and everything starts keeping the pace that it's currently on. I would be amazed if they did not ask us, ask us to go back to seventy. So, you know, the, the.
But basis, based on that, we have one full year before we have to do that.
That's right. We can ask for a year extension.
I recently toured with Casey and a consultant and was shocked to hear that things were not opening back up here until eighty percent of the county was vaccinated. And so that's something that, you know, I definitely want to know how that came up, what is our thought as a board. I don't think the county is ever going to be eighty percent vaccinated.
I don't either.
And it really, really, really shocked me. And luckily, we had this special session.
You live in Blood County, it really shocks you.
Yeah. I mean, it's just not going to happen to anybody, eighty percent.
Yeah.
So I definitely would like to, at our next meeting here, to plan on that, especially with summer and kids being out of school. Definitely.
Okay. Before I, I asked for a motion, I was putting this on hold. Things that I would not like to see us put on hold is the going forward, forward with the lower level restrooms, the lower level sewer system possibility, the SkyFi systems that we are, are. Boy, we have one on order now, one other one for Alcoa. We will have a second one on order hopefully soon for Alcoa. And we want, I think we need to keep going with those proposals.
I agree. And I don't see that as part of the sustainability plan. And the foundation, that's foundation money. I mean, I, yeah.
Is there someone to kind of serve as the project manager, if you will, the liaison of that project and answering questions? And is that something you can hand?
Chris Soros.
I would say Chris Soros will update.
Yeah, so you have a lot of time to be that person.
I think it says that literally.
So then who is his person here from the library, I guess? And it will probably be.
It will be the both of us.
Okay.
And Angela, and Angela will be part of that, too.
My background is I was a construction director.
So if you all are comfortable with that, I think Casey's was. So if you all are comfortable with that.
It's one of his strengths.
I'm a little concerned about the, the, putting in position to like hire, you know, position back. I like, you know, we're, we're losing Casey. You know, we think about just the, in terms of employees. Can everybody hear me? Good, okay.
Yeah, it's not, we have to strain, but we can.
That's right. And so, anyways, I'm a little concerned as far as putting restrictions on like the hiring back of, I feel like that's something that we should empower Angie to really come to us and tell us, you know, we have, you know, we just lost Casey and Ari. So let's, you know, let's figure out how, how are we going to be able to continue, especially looking to opening the library to the public and so on and so forth. And we're getting, you know, full control of the budget. And I think the hiring of the employees, that's something that I don't want to, if I misunderstood the, one of the motions that you wanted to, to hire the position in, for Ari. So I just, I'm a little bit confused with that, I guess.
What I'm hoping is that we would put the hiring of that position on hold. In, in our reviews with him, he said that we did not have to refill this position, that other managers at the library could do that. And so I think as a cost saving, right off, right off the bat, we would not replace it.
As we.
And if we put the sustainability on hold and go back to the system that she had in place before with the managers or the admin team, then, then that position is not necessary.
Now, think going, I guess my concern is that going back to something that we had, that might not be the best, you know, from where we're at. So I would like to empower Angie to say, this is the new ship. We need, you know, things have changed. Let's go ahead and let her, let the herd tell us, this is where we're at, you know, financially. And this is the, the outlook for the next couple of months, next year, whatever it might be. And then we tell it the same thing for employees and the needs of the library. Because, you know, when somebody, it's, I feel like that's going to be on her umbrella of responsibilities to make sure that it is functioning properly, that we're not taxing anybody overly. So it's something that I would.
I agree, but I think that's something that the new director should do. I mean, what if there are changes in the interim and then a new director comes in and says something different? And they make another new change? I don't know if that's necessarily fair to staff to regroup again and again.
But I think that, I think that's, that's business. I guess if the new director decides to come in and change, they have the right to do that. I mean, the coaches do that with the football team.
In the interim, do we need to make those changes right now?
Can I?
I think that's up to Angie.
Can I just let you all know that what I'm going to do is I'm going to crunch the numbers and then I'm going to sit down with the admin planning team and I'm going to share with them and I'm going to assess what they need. So, you know, if you guys, and I'll put this out on the staff meeting, but I will ask them to reach out to their staff so we're getting a good, you know, collection of information. And from there, we'll come back with, you know, okay, patron services saying they need X amount to, to do what needs to be done at a fifty-six level of operation and then a seventy-hour operation. And then I'll do that with each department.
We're also losing another full-time person, correct, at the end of the month?
Uh, yes, Jennifer Spearco is leaving. But we have her replacement in-house and she is an MLIS. And what is it? She is in that department. So she is, she will, I believe, very easily transition in, and we're already starting now.
Well, at the end of the day, I believe, should we bring back to the board her needs.
Well, would you mind taking your, just, while you're talking anyway? Okay.
So at the end of the day, she should be bringing it back to the board, her needs. And then when we have, so I think because she's starting the shift, she knows why to come to us and request and it's available.
And you'll be able to come back in two weeks with some kind of regulation?
Yes, I will.
But this is going over, I mean, until the final placement, she may every month stop giving.
Absolutely. I, I don't think anything is set still. But I do want, want to have a motion in, in a second time. Please, the sustainability. Not eliminate it. For a second. All in favor of that? Any opposed? Thank you. Now, next step. Next step is we have to create a search committee for a new director's position. I have talked to Liz Shrek about what the state has out there for us. I've also talked to Marty Black, who I was going to ask to come again, Tom Taylor to come to this meeting, because they were both on the search committee that hired Casey. And I wanted to see what they could tell us. They both said no, they would like to wait a few minutes and tell me actually created a committee and then they would be happy to work with us as much as they possibly could. Unbelievably, Liz seems to have the entire file for the, for the search committee that, that happened six and a half or seven years ago. And so Marty Black said somewhere here in the library is a folder and a file. She thinks maybe in the foundations office, maybe, of everything that went on before. But they had a, a search committee of approximately five people. And it was made up of library, board, and outside people. So I would like to see at least two people from the board volunteer for the search committee and then help create the other two people on that committee to look for a new director. Now, the way the other committee did it was they created a committee, they hired an outside consultant that did all of the work, a hundred percent, brought into the committee, I believe, four final candidates. Brought them in, brought them and interviewed them on Skype until they really felt good about those four to interview others. But she interviewed, and then she got down to these four. Her name was June Garcia. She's out of Lender, Colorado. The package was $25,000 to hire her. And that, that, yeah. And that included her trips. I think we could maybe work around that for a while until we see how, how it's going. If we have the state helping us and I think we can probably go to a couple of other colleges areas and ask them also to see what's going on in their library programs and what kind of, they have. The state also said that they would post in Tennessee and in the surrounding states the job opening. And so we might not have to do that. But it will require a committee to be, to be in charge of this and then bring that back to the board.
I think the committee should be made up of more board members than outside people. I think we should maintain a majority. That this is one opinion. And then secondly, you need to remember, we're off in June.
Yeah.
And so it needs to be. Well, no, I don't know that that's appropriate, but, but, or that I would be willing even if asked. But, but I, I'm just saying, we need to, you know, we need to think hard about who's going to be around to see this through in that.
First off, do I have anybody who would like to volunteer to be on the search committee?
Thank you.
All right.
I think you'd be great.
I think the, the more the merrier, so.
Yeah, I think we need one more. I'd like to see one more and then maybe two outside people.
I will be a deciding vote. If we have six, then I will be the seventh. If we have four, then I will be the fifth. If that's okay.
Just a comment, I've been involved in a lot of national searches. Okay. Been involved in a lot of searches and shared a lot of search committees from college, for college presidents, VPs, et cetera. This seems like a really small search committee.
Well, I think, well, I mean, I don't care.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I just think that's, that's, that's pretty small.
I don't, I don't really know.
I think, I think nine would be a better number, but.
Isn't that get harder to make a decision? I don't know.
I mean, you have to, you have to come to some consensus as a group. But you have, you have a number of opinions coming in.
So are you thinking a person from the mayor of the city, Blood County, Alcoa?
I'm not thinking about the composition like that. I'm just saying the number seems to me to be a really low number.
So if you have a higher number, would that make sense to try to find? I don't know.
Makes the work less for each individual.
It's fine.
It doesn't make them feel included and have more buy-in to the future of the library?
I think it would. Yeah. I think it's a great suggestion. A lot of other organizations that are kind of having to extend that olive branch or doing that around town.
Having more people or.
Or having their representatives that Susan just mentioned.
Well, I do like the idea of making sure, and you know, there's an Alcoa, a Maryville, a Blood County. I, I, I think, I mean, those are our funding bodies. That's the nature of our collaborative action here.
You want somebody to feel like supported.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I can.
Who is the other Alcoa representative?
Yeah, just one, yeah.
You just have one?
Yes.
So the three governmental institutions should be represented, I think.
Yeah.
And at least three members from this board and the chair. Yeah, that's good.
Do we need one more? All right, we have two around now.
That's fine. I'm just suggesting that it's.
I, I like the idea.
Bringing the base is a, is a good idea, I think, as representation of the government. A healthy representation of the board with three members plus the chair. That's.
I agree with you. And I think as the board, we should have a majority in the.
Is there one other board member who would like to step up? Logan?
A lot of work. It is a lot of work. There's still, I mean, there's no denying that.
I just don't know that I have experience or I, and I don't know what everybody else's experience is. I mean, I kind of know yours, so that's why I thought you were a little bit. I don't know that that's really my strength.
I think so. It's a different use to come to.
Dawn, I hate to put you on the spot.
My fear is that it's not going to happen in the summertime. And I, I can't get off work very easily to come to things during the day. And that will make it hard on everybody. You know, I, I can't, it's more work for me to miss school than it is for me to be at school.
I mean, I don't want to have a search committee doing these things remotely. I don't see you calling people in and interviewing them right off the bat.
But you all are going to want to meet during the day where that's not really.
Vote in from school.
Right, I can't.
In the class.
Right. I've got children sitting there. I can't meet in a meeting in the middle of school day.
There's other search committee met, met at night.
If it is at night, I, I could.
That would, that wouldn't get very easy for me because I do have to work as well. So that, that would be time away from my work, so.
I don't mind doing it. I honestly do not mind doing it. I just think, I always think all these meetings that happen during the day that I can't go to because I'm not going to miss school.
Do you, do you have a problem as being a commissioner of the county? Well, Logan, you're a commissioner, too. No?
No, I'm just saying, I don't want to, I, I don't want to have to miss school to be at me, you know, to be on this committee. I hope you all understand that. But it's, it's hard for me to miss school. But it's, it's hard for me to miss school. And next year, I'm gonna be in a different position, so maybe even harder for me to school. So, but I don't know. I would love to be on this if that is the case, if they do need it in the evenings.
And then we'll just work around your schedule.
Okay. That's fine, I don't mind. That's why I'm always so hesitant to volunteer for stuff.
We can make the meetings anytime we want to make them. We can make the discussions with people anytime. And if we're interviewing people all over the country, the hours are gonna be different anyways.
That's great. I would be, I would be honored to do that.
Okay. All right, so we have three. We'll, we will wait until next meeting. And what I'd like you to do is come back with some ideas of additional people to serve us. That feel good? And I've alre, I've approached Tom Taylor and I've approached Marty Black and they've said no. Once was enough, but they would absolutely help us in any way possible. Joy Bishop was also on that. And somebody by the name of Anderson, who was.
Sharon was on that list.
And I'm not sure who else was on that committee.
Sharon Hannah was the board chair.
I found some, I found some other information, but then I think they would. So Anjana, if you can find that file. Or, and Liz is, Lou Shrek is bringing the file that she has to our meeting this time. And she again said that she'd be more than happy to help us in any way possible. She has sent me some listings already and I'll print them off for us. On who to contact and what businesses they're in and how possible, how much they charge. And we can call these people. Now. And I'm not saying this, but well, in talking to, to Marty and, and Tom Taylor. They both said that there was another candidate that was a super strong candidate for this position. And he was from Seattle, accepted the position and then took it back to his family. And his family were all in high school, in middle school. And his children said absolutely that one. Now, they said he was an incredible candidate. And so we're gonna try to, I think, reach out to see if he's, he's.
In a different place.
In a different place. Because his children by now, that was six years ago, his children should have graduated by now. And his wife's family had moved to Maxwell. And so he wanted to come. So we'll see, we'll see. And I, I don't know anything about him. Out of the blue, he remembered his name. I couldn't believe that. So, so, but I tried to Google it through the Seattle Library and have. So, okay. We'll see. But I hope everything works out well and you throw your involvement to the hat also. Okay. Thank you for, for volunteering. Any, any questions on that?
Do you plan on taking that off immediately or what's the timeline?
We have to create a time. But I think that we start interviewing or start looking as soon as, as soon as possible. I, I don't think that we're gonna be ready to do a bunch of anything for summer. And I don't think anybody will move in September or December. So if we are not in place by September or October, November, then it, then earlier, then it would be next. If, if we take July to fight. But I'm hoping the state, I mean, if the state is running a really, really good just business, like I think they are in the library area, they gotta have a list of candidates for, for people who are to go after the board. And whether they're from Tennessee or somewhere else in the area, they, they should, they should.
Is the first step posting the position?
I think the first step is having the committee.
First step's the committee.
I would turn the committee loose to do everything else.
Yeah.
Job descriptions, uh, you know, the making decisions about whether you use outside help or not. And, you know, the time come up, the timeline, I mean, I would leave that to the committee.
So you would leave the, the decision of the funding of the 25 classes.
They're gonna come in for the money, but I'd like to hear a recommendation, probably. I don't know how we'll feel about it.
I mean, I think if we're looking for the money, did you say the friends or?
I didn't, but I think that's a fact.
I think that's exactly what we would go say to the friends. And we kinda had that conversation with your friends who said no. That I could keep out that kind of money. They didn't think, but let's see what we're talking about. Now, I, 25, I was talking, it just seems like a sword.
That's actually right on par.
Is it?
Yeah.
Really?
I thought, I was gonna say 30, but yes.
Wow.
Look, my experience with that with a lot of the other organizations and I've seen other groups pay around 25, 30.
And, and the friends would have to decide whether this is even an appropriate request.
Well, I think even that or the foundation.
You know, they need to look at their charter and this may or may not, as wonderful as they are. This may not even be an appropriate request.
Will it fall into the foundation request?
No, no, Captain Project's own, your foundation.
Okay. All right. We'll report back in two weeks. And I, unfortunately, I can't. It's a week, so. Sorry, but, okay, thank you. One thing in, in talking to the county in the last couple of weeks. I found that the board here and possibly the director and deputy director have not been covered by insurance. Which was stunning to me. Uh, and I, I had another talk with Randy Vineyard at the county, asking him what happened. And it shouldn't have been covered. He said, well, when the cross library was split apart, that game has been dropped. They're still researching it in the meantime.
Is this liability insurance or there is admission?
Yeah, you got it. And so, and so I've asked Anjana, like, I want coverage right now. Uh, and so she has reached out to Kate Russell, who is the state, who is the county insurance agency. And already requested that coverage for us. And so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought it was gonna get open source.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, really. So I, you know, my comment was I've never served on a board that's not covered.
Me either, I'm serving on a lot.
How did it come about, not to?
I asked.
Oh, you happened to ask?
I was, I was sitting there at a meeting and I said, you know, by the way, what kind of insurance you carry on the board? And they said, no. This is with, with the mayor, personal director, and Randy Vineyard. He said, no, and I said, I have a big part. So I resigned today and he said, well, you better go back and talk to. I see, yeah, I did. And that was a couple of weeks ago. We're going forward right now. Okay, so that, so that's that. The next thing I would like to, the last thing I'd like to talk about is because of where we're, I'm sorry, where we are and where we're going, I would like to have the board meet every two weeks. And not, not a permanent basis, but at least for the next couple of months or at least the next month. So we're meeting in two weeks, then I would like to see where we stand at the beginning of two weeks. To see where we stand and how we're doing. And if we're doing great, then we can go back to our budget. I would like to keep on top of this and have the board involved as much as possible. Be really, really close with Anjana to find out how everything is going and making sure the library, because it's the. It's too good of a system not to have positive things going forward.
I would find, if you wanna do that, I would find the publishing of the actual dates and times.
Absolutely.
Do we need a quorum at everyone?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I mean, we could, we, we don't need a quorum if it's only information. But if it's not information, if you wanna do something, then you have to. And it has to be a public.
So do so, that's what we have to do.
Right.
I can do that.
She said we, they roll off in June.
They roll off in June.
Because I like all you guys, every two weeks for a definite.
And you're retired.
I didn't say that. I, I'm thinking at least for the next month, a month and a half until we see through what's happening.
I'll try my best.
Okay, that's all I have.
So we need to go ahead though right now.
Yeah.
And you need to tell me dates right now, because I've got lots of other committee meetings.
The 18th, the 18th of May is on your calendar.
That's the region.
Yeah.
May 18th is our normal May meeting.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the one.
June 1st. June 15th.
I will be on holiday.
And then?
Yeah.
And the, June 15th.
It's okay.
That's the program.
And then, and then we take a long look at it on June 15th and go forward.
Okay, so we're really only adding June for.
You're just, you're just adding one meeting.
Yeah, our, our normal meeting would have been the, the 15th. And we will do that one.
All right, and so you all are gonna take care of the public notices and all that stuff. Okay, so the 18th, June 1st and June 15th.
Thank you for that. All right. I had, uh, I asked for any questions from guests? Oh, okay, any other?
One thing, and I don't know if, if this needs to be on the export agenda, but in my interviews, I've found out that the staff has no way to communicate with the board members.
That's up to the next.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely. Exactly. What, what Stephanie is talking about is that there is no circle, I, I call it a circle, that if, if an employee has a problem and goes to her immediate supervisor, that immediate supervisor that goes to the next person in line, whether it's the director or the deputy director, and then she goes to the director. Director says either yes or no, and the employee doesn't like it. Or, or hears, does not hear back. There is no, there is nothing beyond that. It's just dead in the water right there, and that's not right. At some point, there has to be the closing of the circle, but they're going to someone else. And then goes back to the employees telling her why or why are, why or why that it's not, it's not acceptable. That will, somewhere, this board worked on that like three years ago, I think, is what you said. But we can't find it. And so I think we need to write it again. And that way, make it part of the minutes, make it part of the manual and just have a firm way to do that. I wanna do that, so think about that for the next.
So you're talking about like a new process? Around, um, addressing consultants? Okay, I got you.
And I asked Anna to look for it.
For you want the board to be the final say on the, with a conflict with employee and.
I don't.
And at least be brought to the board.
What they, what they have received, I'll tell you specifically, what the staff has received. If they had an issue, say with deputy director. And they went to the director and they still had a problem or an issue. They were told that they had to come in front of the board, be put on a board agenda and come in front of the board about anything.
And that's, that's, that's an imagination, that's right.
Yeah, and sometimes it might just be somebody they wanna talk to and vent with. If I had told my teachers when I was at record schools, if they could not talk to the school board members, I would have been fired by the school board. Our teachers talk to board members all the time about issues and problems. You don't wanna really overstep. You don't wanna go straight from an employee to a board member unless they've gone through the steps that's identified and outlined. But I do think they should have an opportunity, if they've got a complaint about something, to talk to me. I'll give them my email address and my phone number.
I'm not sure about that. I think they can, I think they can talk to the board, but I think they have to go through a set.
Absolutely. They should have steps to follow. There's, there needs to be a hierarchy. But I can call my school board members anytime I want to and talk to them and email them and do whatever. I mean, that's an open line. That's, and, and my constituents can call me. They don't, there's no hierarchy for my constituents. So those people need to have access to us if they can't get something resolved. I mean, that like Cindy said, they need to be able to go to somebody and say, I need some help.
But what, what you wanna make sure is that they've talked with.
Right.
To whoever their immediate supervisor is.
Absolutely.
First, and you don't want anybody just coming to board with a complaint about somebody else.
It happens every day as a county commissioner. Every day I get an email or a phone call or something.
But this many, this speaks to the policy. I mean, I, I don't wanna develop policy tonight.
But I, but I also do think that it should be developed in policy that is sound enough and just enough that the likely outcome is that we go through the channels internally and it's resolved.
And it is resolved, absolutely. That's what needs to happen.
That should be something pretty exceptional. And there should be an avenue for that to happen too. You know, so it's not this one-on-one lobbying board members. You know, you've got the policy, you've got a procedure and a policy, but it's that does close the circle internally.
Right.
But also has a tangential way to the board if you don't like the way the circles be closed. Right, but I, I wouldn't wanna be a board member lobbying, lobbying personally about personnel's issues internally. I would need.
Especially if you don't know anything about it.
Well, I, I just, you know, I'm thinking it's solved at a lower level. You know, if you're a manager, if you're a director, then it's happening to you.
Plus, I don't wanna overstep.
That's, that's it. I think we need to be respectful of the delegation.
Positions and the libraries.
Right.
You don't wanna bypass the director or.
Then that's on us as board members, if we do cover by the policy, if you meet with someone and say, have you gone through your proper?
There you go.
Right, exactly.
Yes. It's all in how you do it, really.
At other libraries, typically that is if there is a suggestion that comes to a board member or a complaint or a comment that comes to one board member. Uh, that board member usually talks to the director. And then, uh, steps are discussed there and it doesn't get to the full board. You know? Well, if it gets to the full board, it's a real problem. But typically, that's, that's how it's handled. It's just, you know, and the board member typically says, have you brought this to the aware, you know, have you brought this to the attention to your manager and, you know, whoever your direct report is? And that way, everybody's aware of what everyone's saying. And we're all inclined to be dependent and resolve it internally.
But in no way should someone that be able to talk to the board.
Absolutely, they should be able to talk.
I don't even know how you would enforce that. If I were a public body, how could you enforce some arbitrary, you can't talk to them out of policy?
Maybe they don't know how to get in. Yeah, maybe.
Well, is there a website that says who the board is? Is on it?
That's the.
True.
Yeah, but I don't look at this policy and employee handle.
It's somewhere because somebody contacted me. About it. We're librarians, we can definitely find it, but I will also share. We'll also share.
We're on the county just too. Okay. Andrew, you're the only guest other than the. Okay, uh, Andrew, you're the only guest other than the employees. We have another guest? Okay, hi.
I'm Joan Bensickel Sloan, a retiree, retired public relations manager.
Okay, I, I pause.
Retired community.
Pause the comments from, from outside, uh, guests until now. So if you have any comments or any questions?
Not at this point.
Okay, Andrew?
Are you gonna still hand out the form? The survey? You know, we talked about that you're gonna hand out the survey to employees, so you're just not gonna do that.
That's gone. You have any questions?
I just don't know all the rules, so I didn't know if there needed to be an official motion for adding an extra meeting.
At the next board meeting on the agenda, is the reopening plan covered?
What reopen?
Getting programming, backup, what is our new?
As far as I know, it's not been approved by the state.
Yeah, okay, so. I, uh, just wanna set expectations. One, I wanted to go back to our, our list of the four nightly board meetings. Board meetings, the, on the fifteenth, could we push it back one week so I can be there? So instead of June fifteenth, we meet the next week? And it's okay if not, but.
Sure, I'm out here.
Yes, ma'am. The twenty second would work for everyone.
So you're saying first and the twenty second?
Yes, yes, sir.
Instead of the fifteen.
Instead of the fifteen.
Canceling the fifteen.
Adding the twenty second.
Yes, she's gonna be out of town.
Yeah, well, we need you.
You said cancel the fifteen.
Cancel the fifteen. So it'll be two weeks and then three weeks. Um, and then I also wanted to say, okay, um. It's been an action-packed week, and I just wanna be very genuine and real. What I'm gonna be focusing on between now and the next board meeting is making sure that I have, um, reached out and discussed with staff. What their needs are and identifying to get staffing up to par. Um, I think it's good, and I will share with them that the board is very interested to see what the next level of reopening. Or establishing our new norm is, but I don't think I'll be able to get that by the, um, May eighteenth, if that's okay. Um, I will hope to have some kind of update by June first, and I hope that is okay. I just. A little overwhelmed, in a good way, but, you know, lots of stuff.
I think, Angenee, we all understand. We can't go from where we are right now with all these variables, studying and process, we don't have any of that. Like, we can't say like in three weeks, we're gonna have a plan, how are we gonna get back to the way we were appreciative? I mean, that's.
Oh, no, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking for some action to begin planning.
I can't tell you, we are planning on having a summary program, which is.
My concern is the children outside of school, the school finishing, yes.
And I believe Andy has, um, as of the last meeting, um, on the, on the monthly meeting. So the next board meeting and then when we meet on the twenty second, a staff member is coming in, correct?
Correct.
And they're gonna be kinda telling what's going on for them in their department. And Jennifer Spurco and Chelsea Toward are next up, and they'll be able to.
You know, it's not, this is a wonderful idea, having invite the staff in.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had the first presentation from Cynthia and Kathy, yeah. I remember thinking, this would be wonderful if we could capture this. On tape, video, and any new board member coming in, just as the state assesses for trustee training. To go through, I did that all online, it would be wonderful. We have all of that captured for any new trustee. So rather than sitting down with whoever the next director's gonna be and going through that whole manual that took two hours. And glazing over, you could go in at your own pace and look at each department, what they do. It was so personalized, it was, I wish I had had that information, but I cannot hold. And so we simply kind of should just say.
And it was well done, and energetic, and it was brief, but effective, you know, it was really well done.
Well, and to me, that would mean more to me than the state trustees training. But the, the state, yeah, because that's my library, you know, that's what's happening here, not.
For the future, let's think about establishing that, because I think it'd be a great way to initiate.
That is.
Well, you recorded it, I mean, this is.
It is recorded, and what is it, the friends also asked, they enjoyed the presentation so much, they asked for it to be presented at their, that, their board meeting. Like it too. That is one of the things that the staff really, um, valued is the fact that we're recording the meetings. That's one of the reasons why we're recording tonight as well, so, and we're endeavoring to make sure that they get the board packet. And the video of the board meeting within the week following the board meeting. Um, so I will also talk to the, um, PR department to, uh, get in touch with the, um, managers. And see if they can start making, because we've got a YouTube channel, and we can put that up there and make it private, or, you know. That's just how it works.
I'd like to see you do a continuous loop on a TV set here in the library.
What was that?
Like to see you do a continuous loop with that on the TV sets in the library, so with sound. Not on, not on the mountain, the wall mounted TVs that are everywhere, but like in one of the areas, children's or whatever. And actually do it so that people can hear it. Let's see it.
That won't be done by you.
The other thing from these kind of things, one of the things that really struck me was. Uh, the way the books come in to the book drop. And they're just destroyed when they drop on, under the concrete floor. If you guys would like to talk about that. I mean, they're, they're absolutely destroyed, and we don't do anything about it. We need to figure out another way. And I was talking to Liz Shrek about how the state does it, and they said it's a hindrance to everyone. Well, somebody's gotta come up with a, a better solution than that.
Well, we had a solution in our capital project, but, you know, we, we put that on hold, and, you know. I mean, there is technology available to address this in a much more effective way. It just, you know, you just have to have the money and the, um, and the place, the space. For the equipment and that kind of thing.
I, I think you all have, you all, maybe you don't know, that the book drop was an afterthought. So, uh, you know, we, we've gotta do better. Okay, anything else?
Thank you for your leadership, Andy.
Do we, do we have a motion for adjournment? Is there a second? Is anybody opposed to that? Thanks for coming, staff.